Yeah, I hope she doesn't.
Yeah, very interesting. Alright. Yeah, say it at least.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
You can't do both. How you doing, Glenn?
Four things.
Alright, so.
Hi, how are you tonight? I think you're way off, sir. Thanks, Steve. Steve?
Public participation? Is it changing?
I'm looking to go out there and play two A every morning. I got delayed.
Can we just do public participation? Oh, surprise. Well, that's alright. How does it get kicked off? My suggestion is, play your public participation before you say, you can say, I have a, if you have a public, I have something I'd like to say. I know. I know. It's alright.
Alright, everybody, if we can start settling down, we're almost ready to start our city council meeting. What's that? I know, I know. Oh, thanks, you stepped in for Tracy. I appreciate it. I appreciate you. I just don't want to miss any public comments here. We got that one. That one, and that one. Alright, I think. Alright, I am gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of July 10th, 2023 to order. There we go. Alright, roll call, please.
Zesada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith? Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven nine?
Alright, awesome. Moving on to agenda item B, pledge of allegiance. Can I have Captain Voluntary Action Center already on the spot to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Shadow?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Alright, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, council. Roll call, please.
Zesada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven nine?
Alright, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item D, presentations. I have one, it's proclamation. I have already given this proclamation to the Drum and Bugle Corps as well as had a photo op with Alderman Perkins as we presented it to Michael Embry to be able to present to the Drum and Bugle Corps, but I'm gonna go ahead and read it. This is, whereas Drum and Bugle Corps provide life-enrichening experiences to everyone involved with the organization, and whereas Drum and Bugle Corps are musical marching units consisting of brass instruments, percussion instruments, and color guards. Whereas Drum and Bugle Corps are specialized marching entertainment units, and whereas Drum and Bugle Corps are not solely an activity of learning to march and play, members get to travel across the country and are exposed to many different people who come from different backgrounds and personalities. Whereas Drum and Bugle Corps members learn a great deal about teamwork, being independently responsible, and dealing with different types of people, both domestic and international. And whereas Drum and Bugle Corps are nonprofit governing organizations with oversight and sanctioning body for North American Drum and Bugle Corps, whose members are under 22 years of age, and whereas competitive drum corps take part in a summer tour visiting various US cities like DeKalb and participating in competitions at various college campuses like Northern Illinois University, and whereas local Drum and Bugle Corps promoter Michael Embry has rallied drum corps and organizations to visit DeKalb for over 40 years. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, wishes to acknowledge and thank the Rockford Phantom Regiment Drum and Bugle Corps, a DCI affiliate, for bringing the 2023 contest show to DeKalb, Illinois. Let's give a round of applause for the Drum and Bugle Corps. Alright, moving on to agenda item E, public participation. I have Dan Kenny as our first. And Dan, as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak before council.
Residents of the Antiglen North community deserve the very best of the DeKalb County Community Gardens, NIU, and the City of DeKalb, Illinois. And greatly that will trump fruition once the NIU and DCCG construction projects are completed. When they first proposed our plans for the chef's center on the L lot of Busk, Tilpress, and Blackhawk, they were excited at all the future opportunities that could happen on this property and pleased that everything we had planned would lay out well in the Alaba community.
As time went on, however, it became clear that our plans and specifically our major profit generating resources would not fit with the desires of a combined space for DCCG, the NIU Center for Greek Life, and room for future development of the nearly five acre area. We still hold that the greenhouses and garden center and an adequately sized indoor/outdoor market space for year-round food access are not only critical to the success of our planned chef's center, but vital to the AGN community and the people of DeKalb. To honor our dual commitments to the community and our donors, DCCG began exploring additional options and alternative sites. As presented in the city council agenda, yes, DCCG has accepted an offer on the, or has, an offer that has been accepted on the purchase of 8.47 acres along the Antiglen Road just north of Arcadia and Ridge Drives. This location has proven to be a better financial investment for DCCG and it will allow for expansion and additional services. DCCG will be going through a zoning change process on the property over the next several weeks. Having recently met with the city staff, the mayor, and each city council member, we want to thank you and them, your initial unanimous support for the rezoning and for our new plans of the entire chef project at this site. It has been our pleasure to work with the City of DeKalb and NIU to get to this point, and we wish much success to what will become of the Blackhawk Hillcrest property. Students are a valuable part of AGN and there will continue to be many opportunities for DCCG and the city to collaborate with NIU in the future. DCCG looks forward to continued collaboration with the City of DeKalb, NIU, and others to the benefit of AGN residents in the entire DeKalb community. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. So, I have a public comment. You know, in this role and in 53 years on this planet, I've been faced with a myriad of challenges that have come before me. And, you know, I look to others for strength a lot of times to set the example of what courage looks like, what strength looks like, and what perseverance looks like. And tonight, I would have to say we have a prime example of someone like that. And I'll try and get through this. But first, is there an Elijah Livingston here in the audience? Would you mind standing up? So this young man has a, is quite literally the example of what strength and courage looks like. I'm not kidding, Elijah. I thought of you multiple times this weekend. And right when I think I got it all figured out, I realize I don't. And when I see someone like you setting the example that you are, that you are setting, I want you to personally know it's impacting me on a substantial level. And it's gonna impact everyone that touches you and experiences your life and shares what you're going through. From the bottom of my heart, I can't say enough about how cool it is to meet you face-to-face and how proud I am as a citizen of the City of DeKalb to now know you and to know there are people like you out there in the world that can persevere and can show us what real strength looks like. So I'm proud today to announce that your wish with Make-A-Wish has been granted. And you will get your shopping spree. And Elijah, I'm a gamer too, man. To be able to go out and buy a bunch of stuff so you can crush it in the online world, I think that's pretty darn cool. So today is your day, but also as mayor of the City of DeKalb, I'll make the proclamation that tomorrow, July 11th, I do declare by the power invested in me is Elijah Livingston Day. Oh wait. There's more. So we're not done yet, Elijah. We're not done yet. So you gotta realize, there's certain things in my role that are sacred. One of them is the key to the city. I've given out three of these, two of these, sorry, only, since I've been in office. I hold them for only special people or special events. And I did want to make sure that I give you, from the mayor of the City of DeKalb, an official key to the City of DeKalb. Would you mind if we got a picture with you? Oh, that's awesome. Council, you wanna come on down? How cool is it? You're gonna go shopping? Alright, let's all get in here. You're gonna join us, dude. Come on. You guys wanna get in? Come on, yeah, come on. Yeah, everyone's in this. That is nice.
No, it's not. It was not. Thank you.
Three, and three, two, one.
Pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Yes. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Well, I tell you, a lot of emotions I think we all experience in this role. But that was pretty badass. Alright, moving on to agenda item F, appointments. Number one, appointing Manuel Aladi to the fire pension board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2025. Number two, appointing Andre Powell to the citizens' police review board for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. Number three, reappointing Maurice McDavid as chair of the citizens' police review board for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. And four, reappointing Justin Carlson to the citizens' police review board for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions?
Hey, those are pretty good people.
Thank you. Alright, really do appreciate that. Hearing, any others? No? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zesada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Alright, these appointments have been approved, and Alderman Walker, thanks for the time that you spent on the citizens' police review board. Got some big shoes to fill, so I'm super excited to see especially Andre Powell filling that seat. I think he's gonna be a great addition.
Yes, sir.
Alright, moving on to agenda item G, consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 26th, 2023. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through July 10th, 2023 in the amount of $3,050,730. No, $3,050,735.15. Number three, investment and bank balance summary through May 2023. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through May 2023. And number five, Crime Free Housing Bureau report, June through July 2023. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zesada, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zesada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven nine?
Alright, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item H, public hearings. We have none. Then moving on to agenda item I, one, consideration of the proposed FY 2024 budget calendar. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic, city manager.
The thresholds that are identified here in your background are true enough and we'll soon be in the swim. The city staff are already in the pool. And we're approaching the first main threshold, which is August 21st. That's the third Monday of August, at which time we have the joint meeting with the finance advisory committee and council at that point to look at budget parameters for our general operating fund and for a couple of our key capital funds. And we'll move from there to the preparation of a full-fledged budget to be reviewed by the finance advisory committee in October and then before the council, page by page, if necessary, in November. Looking forward to it.
Council, any comments or questions? I'm sure we're gonna have a ton as we get closer to that agenda item. Alright, sounds great, city manager. I'm seeing Ted's nod. Alright, number two, consideration of a status report on the proposals for the redevelopment of the Antiglen North neighborhood submitted by Northern Illinois University and DeKalb County Community Gardens, city manager. Oh, can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? Do we have to do that for considerations? We don't.
No.
City manager.
And typically, we defer to members of the public who have come out tonight to comment.
Oh, it's I too. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, a lot going on in my head. So we do have some public comment. I will start with, how about Steve Capitan? That was I too. You wanted to talk on Steve, right? Yeah, okay.
I appreciate that the council has spent time to evaluate your options on this project and continue to do so. It's a very important part of the city that needs to be addressed and I thank the council for your deliberation on it. I would only add that the comment on the 150-foot-deep spite strip, and that is that it's a cautionary tale to be very careful in having people check and double-check things. And that's another example of why, and I don't know whether this was passed first and second reading in the same meeting, but that's a very important reason for anything that is either controversial or substantial in dollar terms to go to second reading unless there is compelling reasons for it not to. I know you folks are so into it that you evaluate it, you've looked at it, and so there's no reason to consider it further. But this is an example, is one reason. And the second reason is that it gives the public a chance to weigh in on it in that fashion because they're not up to speed nearly as much as you folks are. So that's my only suggestion and all deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, how about Mr. Glenn Robey? As a reminder, Mr. Robey, you have three minutes.
Thank you to the council and the mayor and all that are here today for allowing me to speak very briefly. I want to say, as a longtime member of the NIU Greek community, it is my pleasure to be here to support the consideration of the redevelopment of the Blackhawk Hillcrest area and to at least consider Northern Illinois University's proposal for other plans in that area. I'd like to thank DeKalb County Community Gardens for all their efforts to try to bring about their project in the Antiglen North neighborhood. Dan Kenny especially, there's been a lot of work with that organization to bring about a positive change in the neighborhood and I'm glad that they were able to find a suitable location for, that will meet their needs. I also want to say to the NIU students and the NIU staff that are here today, thank you for being here to provide commentary if you're gonna speak to this proposal. And my last comment is that whatever happens here, and especially to the students and staff, be impactful, not only to the lives that you all have as part of members of the Greek community, but more importantly to that neighborhood. Use this as an opportunity, should it be fully considered and fully developed, to live your values. Be responsible for the oaths that you took when you became members of your individual organizations and leave a lasting impact and legacy for the community of DeKalb. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Alright, our second one, Jeff Leesendal. Jeff?
Thank you, mayor. I'm Jeff Leesendal. I'm a trustee of the Northern Foundation. I was also the co-chair of the Greek Life revitalization task force. And I am now a volunteering to help fundraise for the Greek Life Center if, in fact, we can get it approved. So we are excited about that. First off, I spoke here before council, you know, and I've said this before, I can't thank you enough for all of the work that you have done through the years for the neighborhood here. I mean, the council has worked tirelessly to improve that neighborhood, the mayor, the city manager, and I am in awe sometimes when I just look at all of the effort that has been done. And I'm excited to be part of, you know, hopefully one small piece of that to support this Greek Life Center there. We hope this to be the cornerstone of the revitalization of that L there. We are working very hard to get that done. One thing I just want to bring, a couple of meetings we've had, there were some questions about kind of who our students were, who these Greek Life students were, why should we invest in these students? And there was questions about, you know, I think we all in our head think what a fraternity, sorority, things, TV and film have kind of got us in our head, what that looks like. But that's not what it is at Northern. And I want the council to know that. Our Greek Life council looks like our student base. And let's talk about our student base. Last, the fall of '21, it was majority students of color. More than half of our students are first-generation college kids. The 60, excuse me, 80% of our students need financial aid. And 60% of our students qualify for Pell Grants, which means they have extraordinary financial need. That is, we are, if you look at this, we, if you look at our councils, it's traditionally, back when we built, we've been in the neighborhood since the 60s, right? When you think of the fraternity sorority houses, it's normally the IFC and the Pan-Hell that have been there for a very long time. But what the Greek Life Center is about is providing for all of our councils. We have four councils. And two of the councils are more ethnically based. We have the Divine Nine, right? We are lucky at Northern, they have all of the Divine Nine historically black fraternities and sororities here. They don't have houses. They used to have some, but we're trying to get meeting space for them. We also have the United Greek Councils, multicultural council. There's 15 fraternities and sororities. None of them have houses. And so this center is about building a community spot where they can all go, where they can have meetings, where they can hold their chapter meetings, where they can have events. So this is really for all of our students. So that's all I have time for, but thanks again for all of your continued support.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. City manager.
I thought we had some more people from the audience. Here I am. Thank you. I am, I'm pleased to bring this back to you. It's been a while since the council has talked in this room and in this forum. April 10th, exactly 90 days. We asked for about 90 days to talk to the two proposers at the time and if necessary to engage some architectural or design help. We've done all those things. As Dan Kenny said tonight, DCCG has made an offer that's been accepted by contract for a parcel about eight acres in size, just a little bit north and west of the area that the city owns. And we're very happy that, if they are happy with that particular decision and we're gonna work with them and serve up to you a nice proposal in their behalf that we trust you will, as Dan asked unanimously, support. Tonight, we have before you a specific proposal from NIU and the NIU Foundation. And the speakers tonight have spoken to that and talked a little bit about the constituency that will be served by that center. Your background tonight has some considerable information about that, but even more back in April, and we've had conversation in the interim as well. Where we stand right now is that in addition to this item, there is following this. Where we stand right now is that in addition to this item, there is following this general consideration. If the Council is by consensus in favor of proceeding with the NIU proposal, a resolution with details that are spelled out in your background as to where we go from here in terms of steps, we would be working collaboratively, I hope, toward a, with your blessing, toward a contract that will have details in it as to the timing of certain things such as permits and the complete, breaking ground and the final completion of a project. And we're delighted to get to this point. At the staff level, we've had, as you have, lots of occasion to talk about the importance of this project. We feel it's very important to the future redevelopment of the land that we own and of the neighborhood in general. So I'm not gonna detail any further what's in the background. In behalf of the staff, we recommend your support.
And I believe tonight, this is the point where we'd like NIU to come to the podium and have a conversation about what they're proposing. So I'd like to introduce everyone to Mr. Matt Strebb. I don't know what your official title is. I always know it as Chief of Staff, but feel free to introduce yourself, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Strebb. I am President Freeman's Chief of Staff, and I'm a proud DeKalb resident. I also served as one of the original board members for Opportunity DeKalb. And anybody who served with me on that board can tell you that I've always held that the single biggest contribution that NIU can make to revitalize in the Antiglitt North Neighborhood is revitalize our Greek life. And we believe very strongly that this Greek Life Center will help us start doing that. You heard in April from Clint Michael Renaud, our Vice President for Student Affairs, a lot about what would be in the Greek Life Center and why that's so important. We're happy to answer any questions that you have about that. As the City Manager said, there's more information in your agenda. What I want to focus my brief remarks on today are some comments that we've heard in regard to our Greek Life Center. The first thing I want to address is that, you know, a lot of people have said, well, why do you have to build the Greek Life Center there, right? Why does it have to be in the Antiglitt neighborhood? You've got a, you know, a variety of places you could build that. And it's a good question. We have a ton of land on West Campus. There's other places on campus that we could build that. You know, but that doesn't take into account the fact that our students who live in that neighborhood are incredibly important residents of that neighborhood. They've been so since the 1960s. And there may be benefits of moving Greek Row entirely out of the Antiglitt neighborhood, but that is not in the best interest of the community. I want to be clear. We are committed to the revitalization of the Antiglitt North Neighborhood, and we are committed to this project. So much so that when this project is finished, it will be the second-largest privately-funded project that we have had in our 128-year history, only behind Barcima Hall. And so much so that we are getting ready to launch a $500-million campaign, and we have chosen to make the Greek Life Center a central part of that campaign. The second thing I want to address, I just want to reiterate something that Jeff has already hit on. There were people that said earlier that, you know, this Greek Life Center is really about supporting students of privilege. And I don't want to go into too much more detail. Jeff has already talked about that a lot. But as he said, two of our four councils are made up of chapters whose members are entirely from marginalized communities. And those are the chapters who would benefit the most from the Greek Life Centers because they do not have houses. Our Greek Life students look like our overall student body. More than half of our Greek Life students are Pell-eligible. More than half of our Greek Life students are students of color. And roughly half of our Greek Life students are first-generation. These are not students of privilege. The third point I want to address is I want to make clear that this project is about much more than just Greek students. There's a lot that's been said about the importance of having a standalone Greek Center, and it's true that it is important. We want and need a standalone Greek Center. But there are myriad ways that this center can engage with the community. You know, there are all sorts of possibilities. We, you know, we could have our Greek Life students serve as tutors or mentors for elementary or middle school or high school children in that neighborhood. Our career services could work with our Greeks and the neighbors on professional development seminars, on things like how to improve your resume, interview techniques, a whole host of things. You know, this is a time of year, it's great, we go out to Welsh Park, and we have some exciting and fun activities out in Welsh Park. You can't do that in the middle of the winter. But we're gonna have a great big ballroom in our Greek Life Center where we can take kids in that neighborhood, children in that neighborhood during the winter and have a winter carnival, have Halloween parties, a variety of different things that we can do. Our Greeks are philanthropically motivated, and they can support small nonprofit organizations that are developing in that Antiglitt neighborhood. Our volunteerism can focus on helping that neighborhood. I, I'm getting really more and more excited just talking about the number of things that we can do in that neighborhood that will connect our Greek students with the neighbors and that will break down barriers and build up that community. The last thing I want to say is I think that we can all agree that a Greek Life Center alone will not revitalize the Antiglitt North Neighborhood. We need other investors to join us and to provide the services that are much needed in that neighborhood. And I was, you know, you heard from Dan earlier, we are so happy that DCCG is able to, has found land where they're able to implement their chef center project the way they had intended to implement it. That is going to be a wonderful service for that neighborhood, and there are so many ways that we are looking forward to collaborating with DCCG. I'll be honest with you, though, we are disappointed they're not gonna be our neighbors. You know, we need others to step up for this project to be successful, to help invest in that neighborhood. And I know, Mayor, you and I have had conversations about this, and this is not something that you all don't realize, but I think it's really important for us to reiterate that.
We'll continue to lean in hard to make that happen.
Absolutely, absolutely. So again, thank you for your consideration tonight. I am more than happy to answer any questions that you have. I have with me tonight our Vice President for Student Affairs, Clint Michael Renaud, and our Vice President for Advancement and the CEO of our NIU Foundation, Catherine Squires, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Matt. All right, Council. Questions or comments for Chief of Staff Matt Strebb? Yes, Alderman Walker.
Says I, the one that does all the talking these days. So I got a question. This is what I'm hearing. I'm hearing, you know, minority this, minority that, and they have no houses. So how will we help them get houses in that area? Because right now, we're just talking about a building for everybody to go to. So how, because, thank, and I'm glad that you all, hey, are you, can you, I want to see it, can all the black sororities and fraternity brothers and sisters stand up? Because I've worked at UPS for 25 years, and I've never seen that many of y'all. Hey, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Hey. I'm gonna be honest, I'm gonna tell you guys something. So one thing that the Chief of Staff alluded to was being role models. I cook a lot of kids in that area. My sister live in that area. My daughter's best friends live in that area. They don't look up to, they don't look up to the old dudes like me no more. They don't look up to the police and the firemen no more. They look up to you guys. My daughter being a frat, you know, so you guys just doing the basic, going to college, you know, talking to them, pull them over, just getting to know them, you know, that goes a long way, more than you will ever know. You know, because they don't want to know me no more. They don't care, I'm old, you know, old dad. They want to know, like, ew, what's her best shirt? She want to, you know, ask about, you know, what's a, you know, sorority? Why you want to do a sorority? I'm talking to you. It kind of looks like my daughter. So that's what I'm talking about. They want that. They want that. That's what I want out of you. But back to my question, so how will we help them get houses and houses to live?
Yeah, that, Alderman Walker, that's a great question. So, you know, where the Greek Life Center came out of was, and Jeff mentioned this, was the revitalization of Greek Life Task Force that Jeff and Melody Mitchell served as our co-chairs. And, you know, there were numerous recommendations that came out of that task force, and that was one of the other recommendations that talked about making sure that we have a presence of our chapters that don't have houses in that areas, helping them to get there. A lot of our Greek students who don't have chapters still live in that area. I want to be really, really clear about that. There's a variety of things that we can do. I don't know, Clint Michael, do you want to talk about some of the things that FSL offers, or Jeff, either one of you actually could do it? Anyone, yeah?
Yeah, just real quick, one specific, just very much to your point. One of the recommendations of the task force, we recommended three committees to be created. One of the committees is a real estate committee. And that was very specifically designed because we feel that, you know, can we help these fraternities and sororities find houses? And one of the goals of that very specifically is if, there are some natural requirements where they don't want chapter houses, but they all live together. So can we find apartment buildings? I've talked to the Mayor about an incubator center where, because one of the problems we have is the houses that were built there are from the '60s, '70s. They fit like 50 people. And so to start up a fraternity and sorority and fit 50 people in, it just doesn't economically work. So what we're looking to do is trying to create smaller houses, right, where that can end, and can we get an apartment building where all of the members of one fraternity or sorority live in that apartment building in the neighborhood there? And the whole reason we recommended this committee is literally to help the students figure that stuff out. So we're very actively doing that. And one of the things we had of the four major groups, subgroups that we put together, one of them was housing and living conditions, and half the time was spent on the students that didn't have houses.
Appreciate it.
Council, one thing I should point out, too, is, and you can see them here today, we have a significant number of our Greek students with us. And this is the middle of summer, and this, I think, shows you how important this center is to them, for them to show up tonight, to show their support as well. Any other questions?
Yes, Alderman, Zazada.
Can you tell us, and I might have overlooked it, I apologize if it was in the background. Can you tell us what your vision for the size of the footprint of this is? Like, how many acres are you imagining it taking?
Yeah, that's great. So we're somewhere in the 10,000 to 12,000 square foot range. Well, in our original proposal, we put in two acres, right? And my guess is that included parking and that type of stuff. So that, my guess is, and we'd have to work through that a little bit with the City Manager, but my guess is we're probably talking somewhere in that 1.5 to 2-acre range.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Hey, well, can we come to the parties?
The winter carnival, absolutely.
Exactly. You can volunteer at the Tilt-A-Whirl.
Or chaperone.
Yeah, exactly. Any other comments or questions?
Well, I couldn't be more excited about this project. I remember, and point of clarification, too, they keep talking about the revitalization of Greek life, and early on, I remember it being pointed out to me continuously that revitalization of Greek life did not mean just Greek Row. As Matt has talked about, Jeff has talked about, and Clint Michael in the past, it's about all of Greek life, and that means all the fraternities and sororities that don't have housing. And if I recall, the intent is to also staff this building with people that are focused on Greek life, to really be able to lean in hard, to be able to accomplish everything that Jeff and Matt and Clint Michael have talked about. So for me to see Northern Illinois University leaning in so heavy on Greek Row, on Greek Life, and in Antiglitt North, I couldn't say enough, as a Husky, how proud I am to continue to be a Husky, and just how excited I am to see this project come to fruition. And if there's anything I can do, and I would imagine if there's anything Council can do, we're here to support you, back you, and do whatever we can to drive this project to completion as quickly as possible. So thank you, Matt.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you tonight.
Yeah, you bet. So City Manager, I'm, yes. So this is a consideration, I think you're looking for, heads nodding to move forward and start working on what the actual contract and the site would look like and...
Well, you have an opportunity in a nanosecond to deal with the first resolution, which will then, I'll walk you through what we are suggesting as a possible...
So that's when you're finally gonna weigh in heavily. Okay. I love it. All right. Moving on then to, turn the page, resolutions on J1, no comment. Resolution 2023-067, authorizing an option to enter into a redevelopment agreement with Northern Illinois University Foundation for the development of the NIU Center for Greek Life at West Hillcrest Drive and Black Hawk Road. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So move.
Second. Move by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. All right, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And there is in your background a resolution that puts out in some detail our sense of what some of the next steps would be. This is a collaborative process, and so representatives of NIU and the NIU Foundation would obviously have to review this and have a conversation about it. If there need to be any tweaks, we would do so, and if it was substantive, we'd bring it back to you. But here's what we've laid out. The question was, how much, how much land do you need? The building as defined in a, again, in your background, call it a program detail, which is to say you need this much for the outside courtyard, this much for large study groups, there's a lot of detail to it. It's anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000 square feet if you add the collective space, which is hallways and such. So that's anywhere from a quarter to a third of an acre. And when you have parking and there's an outside courtyard and a little bit of retention, or at least a provision of a way to get water, stormwater off of there, it's probably a little more than an acre, could be an acre and a half. We'll figure it out. Could be as much as two acres, possibly not. So that's what's ahead of us, but the things that we thought, just to start this conversation, but we'd like you to go ahead and, and by the sense, by the support of the resolution, to give a sense of the body, we think this is good to proceed from here, and let's move through these steps together and come back. So here are the steps that we identified. The obvious one is you need something to define the meets and bounds of the land that's going to be sold, right? So we need some kind of a survey, and we need agreement on that. We need to work out a development agreement, because this is typically what we do, and I think the university would want that, too. There are reciprocal responsibilities as we go through this. There would also be obviously more discussion on the building and site design, and just in a conceptual base, what you have done in the past when we've been buying or selling land is that you'd like to see in a conceptual way what it might look like. And then after approval of that, and just before both parties proceed, there has to be finally a mutual agreement on a final plat and that development agreement, so it'll come back to you with a conceptual building plan. And the further details are in the background in the resolution, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I think it's important that we proceed and let our partners know that we are in full support of their concept and doing it on our property.
Council, comments, questions? Hearing none. Ruth, could you do roll call on this one, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2023-067 passes. Fantastic. Thanks for coming out. This is absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
It all needs crushing now. I know you're going to need that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, you think that's something that outlasts all of us on Council here. Probably, well, definitely will outlast our time on this planet, too. So that's super cool. All right. Moving on to Resolution 2023-068, authorizing an agreement with the DeKalb Community Unit School District Number 428 to provide emergency medical services for DeKalb High School home football games for the 2023... Oh, yeah, we can't have that door shut.
Oh, yeah, we can't have that door shut.
Where the Smokey Back Room is.
Yeah, exactly right. Do I have to repeat everything or are we okay? I know, I'm teasing. Medical service for DeKalb High School football games for the 2023, 2024 school year. Can I have a motion to bring this resolution to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The title pretty much lays it all out. Annually, our fire department works with the school district to provide EMS services at home football games. The price is the same as it's been for a long time. It's a special, it is overtime because overtime to bring people in for this, but it's it's a discounted overtime, if you will. It's laid out in our labor agreement with firefighters' union. So no change from last year or for the last five years, so we recommend your approval.
City council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2023-068 passes. Moving on to Resolution 2023-069, approving amendments to the transit provider contract agreements with TransDev Incorporated to extend the agreements from January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We had some considerable discussion about this last time. Much of the detail has been replicated here for you now comes to you from a consideration to resolution. Nothing has changed. What we're looking at is a two-year contract extension. And we've defined in your background the cost for both the fixed route and the paratransit and what the total cost is. And also a note to say again, as we said at the last meeting, that the our transit staff anticipated in the next year, the amount of money we pay in addition to our flat rates for the fleet and routing software costs will be removed from the contract. And so the contract will be less, it's kind of a net zero here. But we'd like to use that money to purchase some of the rolling stock that gives us a little more, puts us on a path toward more independence when it comes to the negotiation of a full-fledged contract at a future date.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Zazada.
The only thing I want to note is just for our transportation department that as we're looking at purchasing this rolling stock, and I know I say this every time it comes up, but that we really need to make sure we're looking at hybrid vehicles and keeping that in mind, so.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2023-068 passes. Moving on to number three, Resolution 2023-069, no, I'm sorry. Resolution 2023-069 passes. Now moving on to Resolution 2023-070, authorizing the award of a contract to Elliott Wood Incorporated in the amount of $239,500 for the Kimberly Drive segmentation with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $255,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker, I think it was. City manager.
We've got a couple of construction projects yet in the season. And though it's not part of your background here, I want to thank Zach Gill for superintending the annual street maintenance program, which is, believe it or not, done as of today. And it's a couple of months ahead of time. Appreciate the early start and only helped us get some better pricing, but also we can get some things out of the way before late summer festivals and onset of school approaches. But the matter at hand is the Kimberly Drive, the technical engineering phrase or word is segmentation. So portion, a segment of that portion between Normal and Blackhawk would be converted to enhance the green space, create more activity space in a very heavily populated area. We did this last fall, as you know, on Edgebrook, and so this is a similar type of project, some minor detailed changes. The city engineer went out to bid, got three responses. Elliott Wood was the low bid, $239,500. We've asked to go to 255. I don't know that we'll have to go that high, but this gives us some allowance in the event that we find some things as we're digging in that old area that require attention so we don't have to stop the project and come back and hope that it falls in a good two-week interval. And we've done this in the past. I support that, and I hope you will support that and also the base contract.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none. All right, roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2023-070 passes. Moving on to number five, Resolution 2023-071, authorizing the award of a contract to Elliott Wood Incorporated in the amount of $183,016 for North 9th Street parking improvements with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $195,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It was about eight months ago in the mid-fall that the council approved a development agreement with American Marketing and Publishing. This was a companion to a development agreement that the council approved with Naring Electric to resolve a number of issues, parking congestion of vehicles on our public ways and some other things. So we're at a point now, the the Naring Electric piece is mostly done on Locust Street. Now we can proceed with the 9th Street parking additions. And then another add-on was access from the American Marketing parking lots on off would be the west side of 10th Street, North 10th Street with our right-of-way at 10th Street. And again, we went to bid. There were two bidders, Elliott Wood, again, was the low bidder. And we've asked for a small additional amount to give staff authority and city engineer we're talking about here to make any adjustments if we find things that we are not expecting. The project, like the one that you just approved, will be partly paid out of grant funds, the ARPA Fund in particular, and then also Capital Projects Fund, which is our Fund 400. And we recommend your approval.
City council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2023-071 passes. Number six, Resolution 2023-072, authorizing the replacement of air conditioning and air handling equipment through DeKalb Mechanical for the City of DeKalb Public Works Water Facility in an amount not to exceed $25,680. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank Ryan Favor for searching for bidders. It's a very busy time for people who are in the air conditioning business. And also, if you may or may not know, in terms of some larger types of equipment, there is a backlog of orders and not a lot of available stock. For the last couple of weeks, there's been no air conditioning in the offices serving the utility division. They've been doing fine, tough bunch that they are. But I can't leave the room tonight until you approve it, so. We've got a couple bids, the lowest bid, this is not cheap, but it's a large-sized building. The lowest bid was from the Cal Mechanical, $25,680. This is everything, coils, the whole nine yards. So we would appreciate your support tonight, and we're certainly going to expedite the replacement as soon as the award is made.
Counsel, questions, comments?
I love, we've just had multiple resolutions that all involve local companies, which is really great. There were the lowest bidders, money staying in the community. That's really cool. All right, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2023-072 passes. So we're moving on. I'm going to, well, a couple of comments. First, the Daily Chronicle printed an article that I wanted to refute.
Mayor, we have the AIP.
I have to recuse myself from that.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this is my last time to be able to speak before that.
Got it, thank you.
So the Daily Chronicle said that I'm a property owner of multiple buildings downtown DeKalb between 2nd and 3rd Street. That is erroneous. It's wrong. It's non-factual. I own one commercial building in the entire city of DeKalb, and that's the building that Sun Dog is occupying. So that was really disappointing to see that. They interviewed me and had the opportunity to ask me that question if they wanted to. They didn't ask the question, but they printed something that was non-factual, and believe me, I reached out to them on that. And it sounds like the article in general had a lot of, a lot of stuff in there that probably would have been good to maybe double-check quotes and statements that were made by everybody. So present company excluded, that man in the back is always awesome. But yeah, that was, that was really disappointing. So I have to recuse myself from the next two items. The one is with Candid Spirits, and the reason for is because I own a building downtown DeKalb in the TIFF District, and they are asking for TIFF money, which this is an important thing for the Chronicle to know as well, because I say at every council meeting, every time there is money that involves TIFF. Why I am recusing myself, it's not to benefit myself financially. State statute requires that in a council meeting, I am not supposed to be able to be part of the conversation, and it's best if I just leave the room during those conversations because I am a property owner, a proud property owner downtown DeKalb. But they are asking for TIFF money, so I can't be a part of that conversation. And then the second conversation, the ordinance that is before you, same thing applies. I'm a property owner in the TIFF District, and TIFF money will not be, or will be being used in that, which means I cannot participate in the council discussion. So as much as it kills me to always leave, I know it is in good hands with this awesome council. And senior Alderman Mike Verbic will take it from there. That's it.
Resolution 2023-073, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive at 305 East Locust Street in the amount of $25,000. Candid Spirit 2, may we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by McAdams, seconded by Walker. City manager.
Thank you, Alderman Verbic. As the background explains, it was back in February of this year that the council unanimously approved an ordinance that approved a special use permit for a cannabis business establishment, more specifically a dispensary at 305 East Locust Street for Candid Spirit 2 LLC. One of the principals, Crystal Anderson, is here to answer any questions you may have. And as I further go on in the background, this firm has been working with our city billing department. State officials will also have something to say about the layout of the building and the requirements for life safety and accessibility and so forth. One of the major accessibility features that is to be added to this, and there's a little, a little hard to read, but a design portion of the general plans that illustrates a very substantial concrete accessibility ramp that runs almost the length of the west side, I believe, of the building. And it has to, we have to go down below the frost line, obviously, to meet city codes. The lowest overall price for this was somewhere in the range of $67,000, $68,000. The owners have asked for consideration of a AIP program grant. We're well familiar with what they plan to do inside. We've seen it inside, the plans are approved, proceed. So with those things taken care of, the last major feature is the outside feature. And they would qualify because it's an accessibility grant for up to $25,000. That would be the maximum amount, and they have asked for that, and we are supporting that for your consideration.
Thank you, city manager. City council. Alderman McAdams.
I want to pledge my support for both the business and any ADA adjustments that we make. These kinds of improvements make DeKalb better, and I'm happy to spend money to do that and to make it more walkable and to make it more attractive to buyers and customers. And I'll be happy to vote yes in a few moments.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, I'd just like to see minorities come up a little bit, so definitely, you know, I mean, I'm sitting in this seat because, you know, I want to be able to fight for, you know, us out here, so thank you. And I will definitely be voting yes to this in a few seconds.
Anything further with city council? Hearing none. Ruth, please call the roll.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Six I?
Motion passes. Item K ordinances, second reading, there are none. L ordinances, first reading. Number one, ordinance 2023-026, authorizing the acquisition through condemnation of fee simple title to the property located at 128 through 140 South 2nd Street, PIN 08-231-163-013. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by McAdams, seconded by Walker. City manager.
Well, I think there are some people who want to speak tonight. We should defer until they do.
Very good. We'll start with, our first public comment is Stacy Chilton on L1. Mr. Chilton, please come forward to the lectern and keep it within three minutes. Thank you.
I don't have a lot to say. I've been in the downtown since 1956. Most of you people know me. I'd like to thank the city for the help they've given us in the past with the front of our store, things like that. Done a lot of good things for the downtown. Every time I look out my back door, I see a building that should be a parking lot. I support the city trying to acquire that property, make it into a parking lot and help the whole downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Next up is Matthew Keys. Again, Matthew, please keep it within three minutes at the lectern.
Well, I don't think it should be a parking lot. I'll speak for the building. It's, you know, it was built in 1875. It was, it was essentially the first barbed wire factory built by Joseph Quinn. But aside from that, it is, it's an ugly building, but it is still restorable. The brickwork on the side is, it looks like it's just fallen out, but that can be repaired. It has a good roof on it. It's got good power to it. It's got a good, it's got a sprinkler system in it. It's more square footage than is available in a lot of places downtown. It could be transformed into something that is really cool. You could do a roof deck on it. You could clean up the alley, put brick pavers down. You could even cover the alley and make that part of the restaurants that are across the alley from it. Open those buildings all up together and share that space as a communal gathering spot to have beers and eat dinners and stuff like that. I don't think it's worth the amount of money for the 25 or whatever parking spots that are going to go there. I think if we eventually have the need for parking spots, which we will, I'm sure, but I think that that money would be better spent towards an investment in partial of the parking garage that would go over on 1st Street. So that's kind of what I'd say about.
Thank you, Matthew. Next up is Joe Sears. Again, Joe, three minutes, please, at the lectern.
I'll keep it brief. This is a crummy way to be put out of business. We've been in business in this town for a long time, and if this kills us, we're gone. And to address Mr. Chilton's thing, if he went out his back door and looked to the left, to the parking lot across the street from the laundromat, there's hundreds of spots in that place. Now, you got to walk 50 feet, you might not want to do that. Also, I'd like to address the fact that the mayor has, went on the radio, called us liars, has gone to the newspaper, called us disingenuous. The only people being disingenuous in this whole process has been the city manager and the mayor. At the last meeting, the city manager said it was never personal. Well, being put out of business is personal. I feel different. I feel differently. It's, I feel differently. He also said, "I never said we're going to come after you and make you pay." And yet, by asking for the power of litigation, does he think attorneys work for free, especially high-priced eminent domain attorneys? So that is not true. He also has said that the building, he's coming after the building because it's underperforming and underserved. Says right here, "It's underserved when the cost of the mortgage and insurance and other costs are not being offset by the income." There's four or five other buildings right in the downtown that are totally empty. The Van Orthopedic Building, the old Zax Pool Hall Building, been empty for years. The building that used to be the Mexican Grocery, empty for years. The one at the southwest corner of Locust and Fourth Street with the underground parking, empty. Zero tenants, zero businesses. The old NIU Art Gallery Building around the corner from that, totally empty. Zero people. So if that's his reasoning, he should start with those buildings, not a building that two businesses are occupying. The mayor, besides going on the radio and bad-mouthing us, says here in the paper that "we're being disingenuous." He said, "This process started even before I became mayor." No, it didn't. The city came to us in January of this year. Mr. Nicholas says it right here. They came to us six months ago. So if he's saying he wasn't mayor when they came to us, that is totally not correct. This is all driven by the want for parking, not the need. The businesses on Second Street, or I mean, on Lincoln Highway, might want that parking. They don't need it. We have plenty of downtown parking. Everybody knows it. So this is about certain businesses wanting parking right next to theirs, not a need for more parking spots. They have the green space next to McCabe's. They could make that parking. The last two buildings I mentioned are for sale at a price point closer to what they offered us. They could buy those and make them parking. It's not about wanting a few more parking spots. It's wanting those parking spots right near the mayor's building.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Next up is Donna Gabel. Again, Donna, please, three minutes at the lectern. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking as the former Chair of the DeKalb Landmark Commission. I do not think, at least in the information I have read, perhaps you have had more, that enough information was given regarding the history of that building. The one thing I saw in the paper mentioned that it was built in the eighteen nineties, actually. No, it was built in the eighteen seventies. And as Matt Keys mentioned, it was built as the world's first barbed wire fencing manufacturing plant. Not DeKalb's first, not Illinois's first, the world's first. I've always felt that that building should have some kind of a plaque on it. In my visual, simply walking around the building, I could see a building that did need some attention, but doesn't seem to be in the dire condition that it's been suggested. Of course, I have not been inside. I don't know that. It was also suggested to me at some point that a plaque could be put up where the parking lot would be, talking about what used to be there. It seems terribly ironic to me that in the Barb City, we're going to lose a piece of barbed wire fencing history. I'd rather have a plaque on a building than a plaque on a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next up is Dan Sears. Dan, again, please, three minutes at the lectern.
I feel the city's not being forthcoming and honest about negotiations on the building. From day one, Mr. Nicholas has demanded things that are not part of a contract between two parties in a voluntary transaction, which they claim they want. There's nothing voluntary about it. I'm being forced to sell this building to the city. If anyone else bought my building, that buyer would accept the assignment of and honor all leases. Mr. Nicholas has clearly stated he would not do that. From day one, Mr. Nicholas promised he'd use every legal means available to get the building. That message isn't delivered wrapped in good faith. No matter how polite or professional he sounded when he said it, that makes you feel threatened. Words and their use matter. He can't do this unless you let him. The city attorney used the term eminent domain or condemnation in his April correspondence with my attorney. As far as I know, that was his first. Eminent domain defense costs serious money to defend. Thirty-three percent of anything we get over the city's offer, I have to pay to that attorney. I've owned this building since two thousand and two. D and J Properties has been the major tenant in that building, occupying no less than twelve thousand of the eighteen thousand square feet. This is the first time they've ever come to me and asked me about buying it. I am and D and J Properties is a tenant of the building. I've provided you with the CMA, provided, prepared by our Realtor, our spreadsheet, and three MLS data sheets on the property we sold with our Realtor. Her results are in the ninety percent plus of list price. That data's public, and it's accurate. The city's appraisal and their new lower offer is based off it. It's inaccurate. Comp number five is said to be in the central business district. It's not. It's twelve blocks outside of, and it's its own general construction. Comp two, that building's ninety-eight hundred and twenty square feet, not thirteen thousand seven hundred. It sits on fifty-seven hundred square feet, size lot, not sixteen thousand. One point the appraiser does make in his conclusion is that the highest and best use of that property is as consistent with its existing use. I've provided graphs to help you visualize the ridiculous offer they've made me and the voluntary market, as well as showing you what the most recent transaction would have sold for if they were forced to take the city's last offer per square foot to us. One twenty-one North Second Street sold for two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If they'd been forced to accept the same numbers we are from the city, they would have received thirty-nine thousand. We've provided data that the buildings have been bought for and demolished for, have sold for. We've also shown you what buildings on Second Street have sold for, and I've shown you what the open market has valued buildings at per square foot. All of these are closed transactions. Please tell them no. They can't use eminent domain. We're happy to negotiate. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Alderman McAdams.
So last time we met, we talked about, you can stay up there if you want to, and I can certainly follow. Oh, do we have another public comment?
Sure do.
Sorry about that.
I had two noted, so maybe my sheet got missed.
Okay, sure. Please.
All good, Mr. McAdams.
So is it councils wish then to take the next public comment before discussion?
We'd be happy to.
There should be a sheet up there.
There is. Next up, though, is Mark Doorty.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No.
I wanted to make sure it wasn't missed.
Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I am Mark Doorty of the Doorty Law from LLC, and I represent D and J Properties, Inc. through its principal owner, Dan Sears, and his brother, Joe, who are also present. I know there's limited time. People joke about lawyers wanting to speak, so I've made some notes, and I'll work through them quickly. My humble recommendation for all of us involved is to assume positive intent. A friend of mine shared that with me a few years ago. I'm not going to say what his name is, because he would just never let it down that I used his name in a public proceeding. He would love it too much. But I'm doing that right now. I'm assuming that the council, the mayor, he's recused himself, the city manager, and the city attorney are all going to be pursuing this matter with positive intent and conducting the city's business and considering this particular matter. I am assuming that the public comments and articles, and even the drafting of the agendas of the recent meetings are not intended to paint a picture conducive to understanding or agreeing with only one side of this issue, but instead intended to share facts and information as you understand them. And I ask that you please do the same, assume that my client has positive intent in making a fair and reasonable deal with the city for the sale and purchase of this property. I've known Dan for about twenty years. I know him to be honest, forthright, direct, and reasonable. He looks to solve problems, not to create them. He's shared with you that he's ready, willing, and able to make a fair deal with the city. We continue to have discussions with the city through Mr. Rose, and I hope that those, that dialogue will continue. We've shared data, as Mr. Sears has mentioned, about market analysis from a respected professional third-party Realtor, Cary Autumn. In addition, we're pursuing a third-party independent appraisal. And my client recently received an offer from an unrelated third-party for an arm's-length purchase of this property at substantially greater than what the city has offered to buy this property. This is all factual information. We are not creating it. We are simply sharing it. Regarding the comment that the city's appraiser was not allowed access to the property, I received a message from my assistant, my office, that the appraiser had contacted my office. I shared that with Mr. Sears. Both of us expected we would then hear from him to schedule an opportunity or an appointment. We didn't hear back from him. If my assumption was incorrect, I apologize. There was no intent to not let him in. I'm trying to hustle. I'm running out of time. I'm going to go to Abraham Lincoln, who once said, quote, "Discourage litigation. Persuade your neighbors to compromise whenever you can. Point out to them how the nominal winner is often a real loser, and fees, expenses, and waste of time. As a peacemaker, the lawyer has a superior opportunity of being a good man. There will still be business enough." I understand that the council is considering approving the pursuit of an eminent domain proceeding. I submit that that pursuit is not necessary, not now, perhaps not ever. Before authorizing that pursuit, let the parties continue to negotiate in good faith. Seek common ground on the timing of the sale, other material terms and provisions of the proposed contract and transaction. We've not received a contract to consider. It's only been a discussion of price. We have other areas that we could agree on.
And Mr. Doorty, please wrap up.
I will do my best. Thank you for that. I just wanted to end to say that part of this is that the city must provide just compensation, fair market value, the price a willing buyer would pay in cash and a willing seller would accept when the buyer is not compelled to buy and the seller is not compelled to sell. We think we have data that we've shared with you that is consistent with what fair market value would be. Last, I share this not as a threat, but as a reality. My client will vigorously defend any proposed eminent domain or condemnation proceeding. He's engaging with council in that regard. They'll be ready. We want to go down that route, but if we have to, they'll be prepared, and we hope instead to continue negotiating.
Thank you. Next up is Todd Hanson.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Todd.
My name is Todd Hanson. I've been an electrical contractor in the area about thirty years. I've worked with D and J Properties the last ten or twelve years, done all their electrical work. They're always a pleasure to work with. Whenever something needs to be done, they always value my opinion. Typical Dan will just say, you know, "Do it right, make it safe," and we'll discuss it. I know there's several slum lords or, you know, in the area. I don't have any interest in working for people like that, but Dan and Joe have always done things right, and they're a pleasure to work for. Dan asked me to talk tonight about the work we did at the Second Street building last. The repairs were very minimal. We did a couple of light fixtures, installed a couple outlets, and it was the usual. Dan, he just said, "I got a tenant moving in. Make sure everything is right and safe for her." So we just did the usual. We tested all the lights. We checked all the outlets, and everything was good. I believe it was a salon that moved in, and we haven't been back since. We did not get a permit for the work. It was very minimal stuff. I think it was, if I can recall, I think it was fixing three lights and just replacing two outlets. If we did get a permit for something like that, and if everybody got a permit for something like that, you guys would have to have a very large staff at the city. And I have done more work for people in this room, other than that, that we didn't get a permit for either, so. In my own opinion, using eminent domain to remove a building like this is absurd. Eminent domain, I don't think, is designed for a parking lot, you know, just to make it convenient for a small-town area. It's a good building. I've been in there several times. I've done a lot of work. It's not a vacant building that is not being used. It's not a building that, you know, nobody goes in, everybody's seen the buildings are just abandoned, and nobody cares about, and things just fall apart and pile up. They're using the building. Dan and Joe could probably tell you every square foot of that place and know your way around. It's a difficult building to get around in. Oftentimes, I think the angle of it maybe is tricky to get around in. So oftentimes, I've had to say, "How do I get here? How do I get there?" And they both know the building very well. The building is for sale, you know. If the city's interested, they should work something out, you know, and do what's right when a building's for sale. You know, it's going to make everybody look bad just saying eminent domain, you know, "We're taking your building that you're using that's perfectly good, and you've been in business here for a long time." I don't, I don't think that's going to make anybody look good in here. They should do the right thing and negotiate something. If they want to buy it, they should buy it, but I don't think it's necessary to use eminent domain on. I think eminent domain, from my limited point of view, is for railroad tracks or a road or something that's just going to go right through something, or somebody won't sell it at an airport or something like that. I don't think.
Mr. Hanson, would you please wrap up?
Is important in this situation. That's it. Any questions?
Next is Steve Capitan. Mr. Capitan, welcome.
One of the things that DeKalb is known for is the invention of barbed wire. It's been mentioned that this is the first in the world manufacturing plant of barbed wire, back in the day when they put plants in the downtown. Why not consider using a revitalized building as a draw to the downtown? What is the draw to the downtown? Our heritage, honoring our heritage of the barbed wire, of the invention of barbed wire, and an economic development tool should be considered. The manager's summary makes no mention of the historic nature of this building. Twenty-four years ago, last meeting, the council moved to demolish the only example of Bozart architecture in the city, which was the historic post office. And we had a battle with Mr. Nicholas at that time. The city didn't even get the date right of the construction of this building, let alone consider its, the other possibilities beside a parking lot. Has this been sent to the Plan Commission for review, to review this decision and consider the possibilities? Has the city considered the possibility of revitalizing the building? Has revitalization even been evaluated? Has the projection, in terms of the parking lot, has the projection of the cost, the total cost of the purchase, demolition, construction of the lot, been done? Cost per space of the parking? Is it really worth it, even if you did decide to destroy an historic building that reflects our heritage? I didn't see any drawing of the spaces in the backup. Finally, regarding if you are moving to pass this, the city manager is requesting overriding second reading. I mentioned earlier the nature of second reading. This is significant cost, questionable value, controversy due to the historic nature of the building, controversy because of eminent domain. That screams for not overriding second reading, even if you are going to pass this. But I urge you to reflect and consider other alternatives. What's the rush? Do we really need to rush ahead and get the parking lot? Is it that quick? There's no need to rush.
Thank you, Mr. Capitan. Alderman McAdams, you had your hand up.
If someone from the organization would like to step up, the attorney or Mr. Sears, I'd be happy to address my questions to you. I do want to talk about the history of barbed wire. In nineteen ninety-eight, I visited Edinburgh, Scotland. I went into a church that was built in the twelve hundreds. It was fascinating. There were carvings in the wall from the thirteen hundreds. There were all sorts of little intricate features to that building, and it was fascinating. And it changed my view on history. I kind of enjoy history as a thing. If your building is from eighteen seventy, that's pretty cool. That's a cool historical issue. But between eighteen seventy and two thousand and twenty-three, nobody has ever tried to get it on the registry of national buildings, has ever revitalized it for that purpose, has ever addressed that issue. It's like we came up with this at the last minute, and it doesn't, no one cares. No one is in Scotland is coming to DeKalb to see the first place where barbed wire was built or created. All they think of in the world, when they think of barbed wire, is the Holocaust, and it's not a good thing. They don't go, "Oh, yeah, those..." They don't go, "Oh, yeah, those, alright." It's terrible. It's a terrible, terrible thing. And I understand it's part of our history, and I understand it's part of it, but there's no draw on the outside of DeKalb to see where they first made the stuff that they used to imprison and kill 12 million people during World War II. Nobody wants to see that. Nobody, we have a building, it's the barn where it was discovered, nobody goes there, it's empty, the Burger King gets more attention than it does. And I love history like all the rest of you do. But this isn't history. This isn't, it's not on the historical record of buildings, it's not, Abraham Lincoln didn't, you know, write the Emancipation Proclamation there, we didn't have like a Civil War battle there or anything, it's not a significant matter, it's history. But, so if we want a DeKalb Historical Society, and we want to make it a building that's on the historical register, there was sufficient time between 1870 and 2023 to do that. Nobody did. So now, today, if that's what we're going to do, if that's the plan, where's the plan? Have we already applied to the historical register? Have we looked into that? Have we, do we realize that it's $500,000 minimum to restore and renovate that building? And it's not coming from us, the $500,000. It's the owner of the building, and if you want to make it something cool and historic, we're listening. I want something, I want the downtown to be walkable, I want there to be interesting shops, I want there to be cool things to do, I'm all ears for new ideas. A hairdresser? And storage is not particularly exciting, but it's also not on the main street. So we'll address, like, let's assume that the building is in good repair. I grew up on the south side of Chicago, and on the south side of Chicago, you have two kinds of buildings. You have junk, and you have cool. And if I look at that building, I don't think cool. So it reminds me of the dumpy buildings in my hometown that were purchased by owners who thought, "I'm going to sit on this property till some billionaire comes in and wants to give me more than it's worth." That's okay, that's a cool business plan, but we're at the point now where you need that buyer. If you have a buyer that's willing to give you $750,000 or $500,000, that's wonderful. I'm curious to hear who that is, what their plan is, and what they're going to do. If that building's worth $750,000, you're not paying taxes on it like it's worth $750,000. So I'm curious how we come up with, like, it'd be nice to get three times the value of the property that we own, right? I don't think there's anyone in this world that wouldn't sell the place that they live for three times what it's worth. But, okay, so we're at an impasse on the costs. I'm okay with giving you more money for the building, but you won't let us in to see it. And so that's a, like, what are you hiding? If you're not hiding anything, like Matt, and Matt was in there today, then there shouldn't have been any reason why city inspectors couldn't have been in there. And then, I asked last time, and I'm going to ask you, because I'm very confused, now there was $31,000 to $33,000 spent in renovations a few years ago. I went back to look, and there's no record of a building permit. And so either, to be frank, you are lying, or you did it outside of the rules. And neither of those are cool. That's not helping. If you have ideas for what you want to do with the building, or if you just want to leave it the way that it is, if you don't care what it looks like, if it's just storage to you and a renter, and her customers don't care, that's okay, except we're trying to build something in downtown that is different than 1870 to 2023, when nobody came here ever for anything. We want to draw them here, and so we want fun, interesting things. I think we have to go to court on this. I don't, I can't decide whether you're right or whether Bill's right. Both of you have lodged accusations back and forth, and it's clearly contentious, and when that happens, it says to me it needs to go to court. Because the judge will decide what is truth and what is fiction, and if you are correct, then you will prevail. And if you are not correct, then you won't prevail. In the meanwhile, if anyone within the sound of my voice would like to invest in that building, we need you to step forward now with your capital plans and an idea. I've heard many wonderful ideas about what we could do with that building, but absolutely no one has any money to do it, and I'm not going to spend money to pursue somebody else's dream, but I'm happy to help partially finance it, if that's what it is. I was going to vote in your favor, I have changed my vote, I'm going to vote to send it to eminent domain, because I'm hoping both sides will now come to the table with fresh eyes and a calm spirit, and negotiate in good faith with each other, and that the judge will make the right decision. If you've got some other reason, I'm open to hearing it, I'm not trying to pick on people who own legitimate businesses, I'm not trying to crush people's dreams or cause financial problems for any single business in this town. But I'm at a crossroads on this. I don't care if we turn it into a parking lot or not, I care that if we can't redevelop it, and it's not going to be redeveloped, it can't sit the way that it's sitting, and scare away every tourist we're trying to draw to town. So, in my mind, you'd have to at least improve the facade. We have a program to improve the facade, and you've never taken advantage of it, and I urge you to do that, if that's your goal. We want to work with everybody in the downtown, to stay in the downtown, but we want to change the downtown. And so it's not going to look like it does today, it's going to look very, very different in five to 10 years. And you have to start thinking about, like, the difference between Green Acres and the Jetsons. We're trying to get from Green Acres to the Jetsons. And so if you're on board, we're on board, and I'm open to more discussion, but at this point, I think you should just go to court. I don't want to have to deal with he said, she said, who's a liar, he's a liar, he's a liar. I'd just be happy to send it to the judge and let the judge decide.
Alderman Sossata.
Thank you. Well, I can see both sides on this. I think the point I'm at now, though, I find that a lot of this information that was presented tonight, I find really compelling. And I think originally, I don't think that I was under the impression that the building was worth $495,000, which was the counter offer that you presented, is that right?
I believe that's pretty close.
Yeah, so originally, I didn't think I could envision that. Now I see it through the paperwork, I think it makes sense that the property is worth what you have countered with. And so in that context, I think I am going to vote no regarding the eminent domain. That's not the only reason, I think there are quite a few other reasons. I think I've also seen a picture painted of an alternative vision here tonight. I appreciate that alternative vision. For me, the primary reason that I was in support of this was because the alley is such an awkward space, it's so tight, and the power lines and the telephone poles, et cetera, are awkward. You know, I can imagine alternative solutions to that problem. So, you know, I don't think a parking lot is the highest use for this land, I think that the building itself likely is the highest use, and improvements to the building are likely the highest use. What else? I've never really been a fan of more parking, I think I've said very frequently that we, you know, we don't need more parking. However, I can envision it being useful to business owners downtown, I can see that business owners would really appreciate having that located in a better spot that's more efficient for all of those businesses that that alley backs up to. Nonetheless, I think that the highest use is the building, as is or improved, and that we should be able to come to a compromise outside of going to court.
Thank you. City manager.
Is there anybody else in the audience to speak? I think there was, did you turn in a, oh, okay, yes. Up to you.
Mr. Miller?
I'm not aware of the protocol, but we have an opportunity to respond to the particular-
Yes, that's what we're talking about. Yes. I think if we have someone else who would like to speak, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
I think I know probably better than anybody on this deal what's going on. I sold the property in 2002, I was the realtor during the meeting, that was at my office with Mr. Nicholas, and there's a lot of stuff that's not being said that's truthful.
Hold on, what's your name again?
Paul Miller, Adolf Miller Real Estate. I had all the offers on this property over the years, me. I know what the offers were. And they had four offers of $370,000 or better, they turned them all down. The city's not the bad guy here. Mr. Nicholas was a gentleman, as I've always known him to be. There was no threatening, there was no threatening, I mean, no bullying, no nothing. We tried to work it out, we tried to work it out. Mr. Sears said he'd get back to us, he never got back to me, and the word was, he lawyered up. He had no intentions of working with us. I never gave, in all my years of having the listing, I had it three times on the market. My comparable sales were not his price of $450,000, $495,000, and then he raised it to $795,000 and gave it to another realtor. So I don't have any comps, my comps were $250,000 to $3,000, and there's no income. So I hope I got time, but I just wanted the record straight, that there was a lot of things said about this man, he's a good man. And Mr. Barnes is a good man. And I'll probably get it from the press and everybody else, but I'm here to speak the truth. The Chronicle should have come to me, I was the only realtor involved in all these deals. And it was another Jerry Smith regime when Mr. Pappas made an offer, and he couldn't be happier when they turned him down, I sold him another lot for a lot less money to put. And we do need this for that, the only block that doesn't have it is that block, and they need that. They need the parking, because I sold to the damp school, and they take all the parking spots. And the mayor doesn't have, I mean, these are good people, and to say this about these people is wrong. And I'm boiling over right now. He's tried to deal in good faith, he's not a bully. And like I said again, nobody knows that they had offers of $370,000 or more and turned them down. And they were from the city, two or three of them. Did that ever get out in the public, acting like they're bullying at $243,000 and $275,000? What's wrong with $370,000? I can't even support that with comps. And I'm not trying here to hurt anybody, but I can't, I have to have an opinion of value, or I look like a fool. I can't say it's worth the $495,000 or the $795,000, I don't have the comps to do it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Now, if you guys would like to respond, we'd be happy to listen.
I'll be real brief, Dan. I would just mention that access was not denied, I covered that in my prior statements. I also would assume, Alderman McAdams, that you're sharing these same comments with other owners of vacant and nonproductive properties in the downtown area.
I certainly would. So when I moved here, I'll tell you, I thought our downtown was atrocious. I didn't think it was a crown jewel, I didn't think it was impressive, I thought it was terrible. I'm from Chicago, I've seen other places, this isn't it. And it's okay, because it's a smaller town, and because it had its issues with the university being far away, and there was one particular businessman in town who negotiated his way into city council about 20 years ago, and the city council made a lot of decisions based what was best for his business and not for the downtown. So I don't blame people for loving their downtown, or for having emotional feelings for it. It's charming downtown, I love being here, I moved here, I'll stay here, but it's not London, it's not Paris, it's not Chicago, or New York, or LA, it's not Houston, it's not living up to what it could be. And there's plenty of small college towns that are thriving. Illinois State University has Uptown Normal, it's fantastic. All the buildings are filled with cool little shops, and everybody goes there. So that's what we're trying to do here, and, I mean, I appreciate that you own the building, and as owner, you have the right to do what you want to do. To me, it looks like you took an anti-government stance and decided, "I'm not going to get a permit, I don't need those pointy heads in the city council to tell me what to do, I can do it." And you probably did a great job, you probably have great people working for you, it looks like you have competent people. But there's rules, and one of the rules is if you're going to do huge renovations and spend a lot of money on your property, you have to go to the city and let us know that you're doing that, and you didn't do that. And so at this point, I don't, I can't compensate you for $31,000 to $33,000 in investments, because I don't know what you did. I can't look in the record and find it. And I'm sure you could tell me what you did, but it needs to be in the, it needs to already be in the record. So you've lost my vote between two weeks ago and today, because I'm just not happy with what I'm seeing. But I want to hear, and I absolutely need you to answer the question about the tax property. Because if it's worth $750,000, you're not paying taxes like it's worth $750,000. So I'm curious about that.
You want him to be the first property owner to voluntarily pay more in taxes?
I want all of our business owners to pay property tax, and have nice buildings, and do nice things. We're not here, this is not a charity for business people to, like, dump your storage place in our downtown and let it run down the downtown for 20 years.
Is it not a permitted use?
It's a permitted use, for sure.
And why is it not there for that purpose, in your mind?
It's because I'm thinking that we're trying to build, it didn't work. The city of DeKalb is not awesome, it's not perfect. There's not a soul in this room that thinks downtown is exactly the way it should be. So we're trying to make it more walkable, we're trying to make it more friendly, we're trying to attract new businesses. That building looks terrible. It's an eyesore. And the fact that it's like, you know what, I'm going to ignore it and forget those people at the city government, well, you're a neighbor of ours too. And your neighbors deserve the respect of, if they'd like you to clean up your property. If you ran a house like that, we'd send somebody over from code enforcement. You won't let code enforcement in your building, which is just straight up malevolent. And I'm just, to me, I don't see this as a negotiation in good faith, I see this as a money grab.
So since we know what your vote is, I'll address the other council members. I would ask that the rest of you continue to evaluate the data on what is fair market value. Not just determined by the city's appraisal, we do have some concerns with that, but also as the realtors has provided and shared with, through my client. But also look at prior city purchases of downtown properties and sales that they've been involved with, with similarly situated properties, and dealings with other developers who have worked with the city in revitalizing the downtown. Look at that data too, and analyze for yourselves, what do you think fair market value is? And then only when you feel that we've exhausted all reasonable negotiations, then maybe you decide at that point, we need to go, we've exhausted those opportunities, we need to go with an eminent domain proceeding and roll up our sleeves and litigate, and then have written interrogatories and subpoenas and depositions and trial.
Alderman Walker.
Do you want to respond to anything?
Well, he said so many things, I got to be honest with you, I'm struggling to remember if there were questions there.
I'm going to give you a suggestion.
Was that addressed, Alderman McAdams? The one thing I will absolutely refute, absolutely, is you're suggesting that the number we spent on improvements is fabricated. That's part of the argument here. Things get said in the paper, and I don't know if you caught the exchange with us and the mayor, he confronted me here and said, you know, "You said some things in the paper about me." And I said, "Let me read some things you said." I didn't say that. The paper got it all wrong, right? I'm with Mr. Miller on that, the paper and the mayor, that was a travesty. As a matter of fact, in the first article, there are two pictures of our building, provided by the city, and near the caption, it says the building's vacant. This was after Jenny spoke, they know, she's in there.
Well, I've been in there, yeah.
She pays sales tax, so what's, the words are twisted, absolutely twisted.
Alderman McAdams, one moment, Mr. Sears, have they addressed your question or your point? Yes. Okay. But I also wanted a reaction.
Yeah, the other issue, again, that I got to get out there.
Well, we're going to move this along, Alderman Walker.
All right, so, in a perfect world, which I wish we lived in, I guess we got to somehow get back morals, morality on a lot of things here, you know? First of all, I think I want to correct Mr. Hayes, is that your name?
Hayes.
Okay, sorry about that, but I believe with the Supreme Court ruling, I think it was key, Mr. Rose, I think that you can, you know, I'm not smart, as smart as you, but I believe, I believe with Kelo or Kelo versus New London, I believe it was five to four, Supreme Court made it easier, you know, to take, you know, or not take, ask for, you know, people to give their properties up or whatever, like a public parking lot, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, you cited the Supreme Court opinion, the Illinois legislature passed the eminent domain act in response to the Supreme Court's decision in Kelo, but there's, you know, to your specific point, there's express statutory authority to acquire the property, or any property, by the municipality for the purpose of making it a parking lot, or if it's in a TIF redevelopment district for the purpose of the TIF redevelopment purpose, so.
Okay, I just wanted to- Okay, I just wanted to understand. I knew you would know better than I would. Okay, so, here's my, you know, I'm all over this. I have several issues on both sides. Okay, so, first of all, I don't want to be, I don't think that we should just take, and I think it's take people's buildings unless, you know, there's certain, you know, situations like life safety issues. Have you ever got any code violations with how your building is? Because I'm hearing from a lot of people that A, B, and C is a matter with it, and I know they haven't been in your building. So, if there are code violations, they would be on file. Do you have, have you ever had any of those?
No. And again, to counter the point that inspectors were not in the space, they absolutely were in the space. I talked to one of them today. I believe his name is Pat O'Donnell.
Okay.
Dawn Harper has been in there. Tim Weaver has been in there. Not only were they in there when we were building out Jenny's space, they were in there for the prior tenant as well. Mr. Nicholas has walked through the building. I personally escorted him through it. The prior head code official prior to Dawn, I forget his name, Thaddeus, I believe was his name. I walked him through the building. He said to me, I had no idea this building was sprinkler. So, I understand there are some misguided beliefs or understandings to that building.
All right, so, okay, so, I want to, yeah, I wanted to get that squared away because I said, you know, I want to cut the rumors and come with facts because honestly, I'm about tired of talking about this. It's kind of getting to me. So, that's the first issue. So, you're saying no codes, and if we had codes, they would be on file, right? Guess so.
We have, Alderman, just for the record.
Yes, sir.
I checked with Dawn Harper, who's our chief building official at the last meeting, to see if they had been invited in for any of the improvements. There are no permits, there's no record of any permits being issued for that building.
All right, thank you. Okay, oh, another thing, and you know, and I just, you know, I'm going to throw some things out there and I just, you know, this is our job. This is why I'm on here. So, we're not going to be getting home anytime soon. Because when you're starting to take, you know, try to take or ask somebody for their buildings, we need to get it right. So, downtown area, I work it. Everybody knows, you know, my job here. So, when they were doing, you know, we were doing our new streets on Lincoln Highway there. I was told, and I'm not going to throw any names out, but I was told that, you know, because I was upset. I was like, why are we taking parking spots off? I can't park my UPS truck here. People can't park here. It's going to crowd, you know, whatever. I was told, we have a parking lot on Second Street. I was told, we have a parking lot on Fourth Street that are almost vacant all the time. So, on that, which, you know, that kind of doesn't equate to, we've done studies to find out that we need more parking in, you know, on Second Street. It just, it doesn't make sense because what has changed in a year and a half to where we need all these new parking spots all of a sudden? So, that's another thing that I'm having a hard time going back and forth with a lot. So, I'm getting talked about, you know, about the back alley, you know, because it's, you know, pickup trucks or trucks, delivery trucks can't get through the whatever. Well, I drive the biggest UPS truck at UPS, and I've always been able to drive right down there without any type of issues. That's another thing. So, I kind of throw that one out. Now, if we were talking about putting up something there that could bring, you know, taxpayers, you know, some relief or, you know, making some money, then that would be a different conversation. But for me right now, twenty-five to thirty-five parking spots, just not it. Especially when you're talking about, you know, taking, you know, I guess, property managers out of business for that matter. Now, what I would want in this world, I would want everybody to come together and really resolve this because, you know, and I'm not going to, you know, I may get in trouble for this, but I really don't care because UPS pays me. I have relationships on both, everywhere here, everywhere. I have some type of relationships. You know, with his tenant, with a guy I delivered to for almost twenty-five years, and where I'm at right now. So, I know everybody's, you know, heart's in the right place. And I know we're getting a little bit fragile right now because on one side, we're saying we're getting bullied. Other side, saying, well, you're trying to take my building. I mean, I would feel like both sides right now, which I do. But I think we have to come to some kind of, you know, fair ground with a price that's offered and, you know, with a price that, you know, is given. And we can't kind of be, you know, I just, it's just hard because how do you tell property, you know, manager who, because the whole thing is you buy, you get a property to sit on it, to hope one day that it can, you know, help pay for college or it can help pay for a lake house or whatever the case may be. That's why I would get it. It just makes sense to do it that way. But, you know, when we start talking about, you know, asking for three hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not saying you did that, just some of the numbers were thrown out that way over, you know, what people claim that it's worth. You know, I can understand where a side will, like, you know, Alderman McAdams would get kind of upset about it. So, I get that. But then again, in the same, you know, breath, I'm not about, you know, telling somebody, I want your property, but I'm going to give you what I think is fair. That's not cool either. So, really what I would like to see is, and I don't know how we can do it because I'm, you know, a green Alderman here, but I'm learning and I'm going to learn a lot. But I want to figure out a way where we can go back to the table and we can kind of honestly sit down and stop kiddie BS that we've been dealing with so we can really find out what we can do for it. Because I don't want you to get screwed at all, but I don't want, you know, the city to get screwed either, just throwing away money that we can use elsewhere for other things. So, there has to be some type of common ground that we have to get to, and we have to get to it soon because there's so many other things that we can put our energy to. I don't know your name. I'm sorry. I don't know everybody's name, but, you know, what you said, I love, you know, I love that too. And you know what? If we were talking about doing something like that and putting something right there, I would probably be all over it. But we're not. We're talking about twenty-five, yeah, but we're talking about, yeah, we're talking about twenty-five and thirty parking spots that aren't just needed. They're just not. So, let me ask this question. Would you be interested into fixing your building up if it's messed up like everybody's saying it is?
It's not messed up like everybody's saying it is, and yes, and as another answer to your question. We applied for an architectural grant. And at the time, there was a sitting council member who was a mason. And in the meeting, he said, I'll come over and take a look. He took four bricks out of that alley wall. We were declined because the building had been demoed. The city claimed that the removal of those four bricks began the demo process. You will not find a demo permit on file.
That doesn't sound fair.
Right. We were declined for that reason. We tried to put apartments, loft apartments. We were turned down for the reason of it would bring too much density into the downtown area. I have the plans. I still have the plans. Since then, I believe the city has approved a hundred and fifty. The one building on the corner has fifty-one. I'm not sure how much Second Street has, and I'm not sure how many Agora Tower has. But it's more than seven. We asked for seven, and we were declined.
All right. And another thing, you know, and we are trying to build our downtown up, right? Everybody agrees with that. And when it comes to the parking, it's like, all right, well, what's the point of putting an extra parking lot right here when the whole point we should have is, you know, if you can park on Second or Fourth Street and maybe walk down Lincoln Highway east or west and maybe look in the shop, maybe go in there and spend some money. That's another thing as well. So, you know, the whole thing is, we just kind of, everybody's contradicting themselves, you know, with all this. And that's what's frustrating because for me as an Alderman, I don't know where the truth comes from, so I have to do my own homework. But right now, I can honestly say that I'm kind of getting fed up with just the back and forth. And we need to come with some realistic numbers because I, you know, I honestly did not think your building was worth whatever until I started doing my homework. So, I have to do my homework, and I'm not an appraisal, you know, I'm not a numbers guy. So, you know, I'm sorry that I thought that you should have got whatever, you know, we decided. But I think that we need to go back to the drawing board and we need to figure out a good number because you are interested in selling it if the price is right, right?
That's exactly what I stated to Mr. Nicholas in the first meeting.
So, I just.
My building was not for sale when we met.
Okay, so.
And I said that to him. If we make a deal and it's fair, it's up to you. I'm not here to stand in the way of the city's progress. Right? I got no problem with that. That should fall on greater minds than mine. But I struggle with someone, again, I said it to the mayor when he confronted us. You know, we survived COVID. Within thirty days of COVID hitting us, our revenues dropped seventy percent. In its infinite wisdom, the government excluded landlords from any of that PPP, CPP, PPQ because we're too small to get it anyway. Okay? So, we survived that. We borrowed more money to get through it. So, it's not easy when you help a tenant and you help other tenants who are renting too much space and you downsize them. And all this data I provided you is on the hopes that you can analyze it, is on the hopes that you can understand it. And that's why I contacted each and every one of you and offered to sit down with you individually face to face and help you understand the data. Because that's all we've ever asked for. Is the opportunity to sit down with everyone and negotiate at the table, everybody involved.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Did that address your interest?
Yes.
Alderman Perkins and then Alderman Larson.
So, this is a hard thing. You know, I don't like the thought of the eminent domain thing at all, you know? And I don't like the thought of having to sit in the judgment chair of a lot of different commentary. But from where I'm sitting, I trust what Bill has said. I trust him eminently. And my big concern is, I want to move the ball forward. You know, I think if we look at the facts of where things are, you bought it in 2002 for a hundred and fifty grand, right, the building?
Yes, sir.
And so, in twenty years, there's been plenty of opportunity for all of this great development, these development ideas we've talked about. Nothing has been done. The building, from what I see, is essentially what it was then. So, my thought is to make the best decision I can going forward, to go forward with the space. And I think, to me, that process is, is a good faith negotiation. And it's not saying, well, I assumed someone was going to call me. I assumed someone, and it didn't happen. That's kind of like the dog ate my homework stuff. So, what I'd like to see is a process that goes forward, and I think the process is getting a licensed appraiser, yours, we have ours, and move the ball forward and then start there. But I think the market assessments, these are great. They're market assessments that present an opinion of someone, not necessarily a licensed appraiser. You know, so that's kind of my thought, is to move forward. There's been twenty years to do something and nothing's been done. The ideas are great. I love them. I wish we could have done something. We haven't. And maybe an outcome is, maybe we do start to put some meat on the bone for these ideas going forward. I think the ideas are awesome, but we haven't moved the ball. I want to move the ball forward because we're still focused on trying to develop the downtown. And whether it's a parking lot or not, I see value in improving accessibility for that block down there. That's the first thing that I see. Now, if we develop it, great, but I want to do something. I'm just not happy with the current condition of just being, you know? So, there's my thoughts, because I want to see a process that moves the ball forward.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. Alderman Larson.
Where to begin? We've hit so many wide variety. It's not just about a parking lot. I mean, everybody keeps bringing, we don't necessarily need a parking lot. And I think our job here, it's about current things. The air conditioning broke. You guys are sweating bullets. We have to date day-to-day stuff. But we're also trying to look forward as where we think, DeKalb, where do we want DeKalb to be? You know, where, you know, and you have to start with the first step to know what direction you're going in. And so, I look at, it involves three or four people very personally. But I also look at the forty-some thousand other people who live here that we all answered to in one way or another about where we are trying with all the information that we have to get us where in ten years, we look back and go, God, DeKalb's really doing good. I mean, this is the place I want to be. And it's hard decisions. These are decisions we will all spend time on before we got here, and we will second guess ourselves when it's done. And not just about not, you know, where we're going, but while it would be lovely to turn that building into something else, we still have the issues of Second and Third Street being blocked by semis because they can't get down the alley. Alderman Walker didn't get his UPS truck down. Some of the beer guys can't. And then they knock the electric poles down, and then everybody loses power for. It's more than just a parking lot is what I'm trying to get at. And I do believe with what we've talked about here, and I'm definitely hitching my horse to Alderman Perkins' idea, is I would, I would love to table the whole talk of eminent domain. Not throw it out, but just put it aside, put away. Love the Daily Chronicle. Still get it, but no more interviews and just everybody come with good faith and try to take any emotions out of words and thoughts that are chosen and try to all look at from you from your personal side and the city from their side and try to come up with the best agreement that everybody can walk away and say. Because I'll go back to what I told somebody, compromise is where everybody walks away like, okay, am I really happy? No. But I, you know, because if someone's ecstatic, that usually is uncompromised. I would like everybody like, I can live with this deal. And that's what we're asking from you too, because this is what we have to come up with, is try to make forty thousand people okay with what we're all deciding here. And it's a tough call. And so, I would like to make a motion to table eminent domain proceedings now if we continue to see things, the ball moving forward. And that they, that totally off the table, as long as things keep moving in a honest and ethical way, which I know other people in this room, that's what we want to get down. And that we can have a victory for DeKalb at the end of it.
Alderman Larson with the motion to postpone. May we have a second?
Second.
Further comment from council, Mr. Alderman Perkins?
I do have one question. So, last, when we last talked about this, you guys were talking about an appraisal. Have you moved forward? Do we have a date on when that's happening?
The appraisal has been done. We have not proceeded it. In one of our negotiations with the city attorney, it took them six weeks from the time they got it till they delivered to us. We've asked for those same six weeks.
So, I guess when, are we saying it's?
I believe the appraisal was onsite.
Is it four weeks from now then? Because that was two weeks ago.
Well, no, it was.
When we talked here.
The appraiser was, I believe, last Monday. A week ago today, the appraiser was onsite. I asked him, when will you get it back? He didn't have a date. He was standing there. He didn't have a date for him. But we've negotiated this between my attorney and Mr. Rowe.
Can you get a date from him? That's what I'm looking for, some measurables and some dates. And when, when can we get some milestones that we can, because they're in, I think it's, A, agree on the process and then get some milestones and hold ourselves accountable to the process. And that's my concern with a lot of this, is if we look at all the strings of emails, it's going on for six months with no measurable progress. And it's, so-and-so didn't return my call. I called, and I'm, that's why I'm just like, well, what can we get dates on? And start measuring ourselves against it?
I can't speak for Dan, but I would encourage him to speak with the appraiser. He's an independent appraiser. We don't have control over him or his schedule, but we can fester for progress.
Jenny, I want to.
I want to address a couple of things. This dog ate the homework thing. I get it. I don't see it that way. I would just say that at no time since I, my office received a message that this gentleman wanted to have access or wanted to speak with me or Dan thereafter, did he ever hear about it again?
Did you call him back?
I didn't hear from him.
Did you call him back?
I forwarded it to Dan with the expectation that he was going to be reached out to us.
That he was going to call you back again. And this is what I'm talking about. And this is, this is one reason I wanted to talk about this in some detail before we agree to postpone it again. Because we're here having the same conversation, and we're having this conversation, I think, now because there is some pressure, some eminent domain pressure, to start to get to the table and start talking. And the longer we wait, the more we kick it out, then I'm concerned that the dog is going to find more homework. And we're going to be talking about it again.
So, how about a deadline of our next meeting, which is July twenty-fourth, correct?
So how about a deadline of our next meeting, which is July 24th, correct? Is that a deliverable, is that within what your-
For a date on when we can expect the appraisal? I'm good with that.
Alderman Walker?
I just, okay, yeah, I'm good with that. But here's my other thing. I don't understand why we're rushing it, like, why, like, I mean, it's not making any sense why we have to, you know, just rush it this quick, you know? I get it, you know, for the people who say we do need a parking lot because the state's right here in the agenda for downtown parking. We don't need that right now. So, I just think that, you know, I kind of, I agree. Don't get mad at me. Your last name?
It's Alderman.
Okay, sure. But no, I, you know, I'm with her right now. But yeah, I think we should, you know, table it, you know, so, you know, but we have to work, like, we have to work, you know? You know, the gloves, I see the gloves coming off. I want to keep them on, you know? So, let's get to work and let's come, you know, with a good number and let's just figure it out so we can move on from this.
Alderman Zazada.
In all this, I had never really mentioned that I'm a Realtor. So, just want to mention that. But in appraisal, usually you get the numbers back the next day. So, asking for it in two weeks is not unreasonable whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you. City manager?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I think all parties will agree that in the first meeting we had face to face, the topic was, what would be a fair market value? And I believe I expressed then and have many times since, in open session, closed session, one-on-ones, that, in my opinion, in behalf of the council, and with the council's support, the estimate of what that value might be, a fair market value, would come from a full appraisal, inside and out. The city did an appraisal with only access to the outside. Our position, and city attorney has made this known to Mr. Doherty, is that we like to have a full appraisal. And if the owners want to do that, fine. We'd like to, of course, then we'll review that, bring it to the council. There are some comps that the owners have provided us. The average price of those sold comps was about three hundred, three thousand. Maybe the appraisal will be higher. We don't know. As Mr. Doherty said, that's an independent opinion of value. And you can get as many independent opinions of value as there are appraisers, qualified appraisers who are certified. So we're hoping that that appraiser is qualified by the conditions of their profession. And we look forward to seeing that. I support the council's idea of tabling this until we can see that. I also support Alderman Perkins, that it shouldn't be an open-ended timeframe. One of the reasons why we're here is because but for the threat of eminent domain, we probably wouldn't be this far. So we're happy if we reach this point where we're all in agreement that there ought to be a full inside and outside appraisal. We've made some progress. It's been contentious and you didn't have been that way. But I support that. And I support the council. It looks like your intention is to wait until the two weeks from now to hear. And we can ask Mr. Doherty, or I assume Mr. Doherty will speak for the owners, to come here in two weeks and make a very brief presentation at the top of the agenda. It's going to be a heavy agenda, again, and it will be for a while. But just the status of where we are, and at that point, or if not before, the staff then will dig into what's been produced.
One moment. I would suggest that from our appraiser's standpoint, if you look at our appraisal, we should consider someone different because they said that our large, two of our largest employers are General Electric and Monsanto. So, I'm concerned with their accuracy on values, if that's what they're coming up with from a background material. Alderman Walker?
It just seems, you know, like I said, I'm not the smartest man in the room, but it just is easy. They won at 495, you know, city offered 275, meet in the middle. I mean, so...
Hi, Mr. Verbeek.
One moment, yeah, go ahead.
In response to Mr. Nicholas and Mr. Perkins, average sale price is not the same as price per square foot. These buildings are different. So look at that. You do have the data, you have a bunch of data that you can be looking at and evaluating now before another appraiser is finished. And that data will show that the, I believe respectfully, that the number that being offered is not reasonable. But we are very excited about the dialogue and continuing to have it.
My point with the data, the data is, we can find data, anybody can find data to support whatever case they want. I'm kind of of the viewpoint that an appraiser, a licensed appraiser, is going to have a defined methodology that's acceptable in his or her industry.
I wouldn't disagree that the licensed appraiser might be a greater authority than the licensed Realtor. But I think we've already recognized that there's problems with the appraisal that you have. So it's not that I'm a licensed appraiser means that my opinion's going to be perfect. That's not true.
To support what Mr. Verbeek just said, the certification that the appraiser uses, this information's supposed to be validated. It took me ten minutes to find out his comp was in the general construction zone through the head zoning official. But yet he states, and I quote, "The statements of fact contained in this report are true and correct. They impact his value. They are not true, and they are not correct." Because of that, I think the data we've provided suggests his value is way too low. It's not just low, it's way too low.
And that's why I'd love to have your guys' appraiser, appraisal as well. Then we've got some comps that we can-
It took, there's six weeks to get us the report. I will do everything I can to push him.
May I ask one last thing? While we're waiting for the report, I wonder if the city could hire an appraiser up to your standards?
Please.
And gain access to your property with reasonable notice?
I'll assure contact. Give me their number. I'll contact them.
Happy to.
Because as I stand here today, that appraiser's never called me, not once. But yet he claims in his report he did. Never once has that man called me.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. Anything further from city council? Ruth, please call the roll.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbeek?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Six I?
Motion to postpone passes. Thank you all for your comments and discussion. And we'll look forward to everybody convening in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much. Good night.
Real quick.
Think the mayor's still out there?
Well, we have, yeah, he could come in. Somebody could.
You missed it. You missed it.
Oh, let's see, where are we at? All right, so moving on to L2. Ordinance 2023-028, amending Chapter 36 amusements to remove the licensing requirement. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager?
Thank you. So, a small item compared to some of the other items. We make about forty-one hundred dollars a year on an amusement tax that affects some twenty-two businesses. A couple of them support most of that revenue. And occupy a good part of the time of the executive assistant every year as we renew these on a regular basis. And the matter came up most recently when the mayor gathered together all the liquor license holders at the Egyptian Theater. And there were some thirty-plus local business owners present at that point. And heard no discouraging words when it was proposed that maybe we could come to the council and ask you to revoke this or to remove this requirement. Every one of the people paying this license is already paying a license of some sort, and some very substantial license fees for alcohol. So we ask your support for this minor matter, but it would be well received.
Council, questions, comments? You're right, that was a great outcome of, one of the outcomes of the Liquor Summit, I think we called it. No more nickel and diamond for a dark board. So, yeah, that was fantastic. All right, hearing no other questions or comments, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbeek?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2023-028 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wa, or moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbeek?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2023-028 has been waived on second reading. Moving on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, Councilmember Reports. How about Alderman Verbeek? You want to kick us off?
You betcha. Uptown sounds at the Village Commons this Thursday, which is an opportunity to DeKalb, effort to revitalize the northwest side of DeKalb, planning on some live music, launch event to get together, network with fellow business owners, residents, students, you name it. So uptown sounds, we look forward to future live music in Ward Six at Village Commons.
Excellent. Alderman Walker?
I took a tour on one of John Pappas's buildings. I think it's called Agora. Is that it?
Yeah, Agora.
Beautiful, just a beautifully built, just a good, just a great, you know, property owner. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Pappas and what he's doing. So just wanted to point that out.
Awesome. Alderman McAdams?
Calling all water warriors in DeKalb County, get ready to make a splash at the first annual DeKalb Water Wars. Mark your calendars for July 23rd and August 20th as the DeKalb Police Department invites you to an epic showdown of watery fun and friendly competition. The first event will be on July 23rd at Welch Park. For ages eight and under, it'll be from 2:00 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. And ages nine to seventeen, it'll be from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. So come join us.
Alderman Zazada?
I just want to say I'm thrilled by all the work we're doing here. And I think that, you know, things like this liquor license cleanup, you know, the extra fees thing, I think that those are evidence of a thriving community, that we have time to focus on cleaning up extra fees that don't need to be bothering our businesses. You know, among the rest of what we worked on tonight, I think our community is just doing amazingly. So, and I applaud all the staff for all of your engagement and effort to make this all happen. Thank you, and the council, thank you.
Awesome. Alderman Larson?
No report.
Alderman Perkins? No report. For me, I always should prepare this sooner, but it was busy a couple of weeks when it came down to it. I guess I'll lead off saying, went to a belonging council meeting, which was well-attended, which was fantastic. Just hearing about next steps. And we got to see Renice Elchhill Walden. She left as the chief diversity officer of Northern Illinois University. So there'll be a new hire in that spot. I also want to thank all of you. I met with every alderperson since the last council meeting. So I really do appreciate your time, appreciate your feedback. I think that's what makes us such a strong council, is just that communication and the desire to have open and honest dialogue. So I really appreciate all of you for that. Was on the WLBK show. Good luck always going on that because TD rapid fires questions at you. And I respond usually to any question I'm ever asked, whether I should or shouldn't sometimes. But I always appreciate TD giving us the time. And I say "us" because I can talk about all the great things that are going on in the city of DeKalb. Fourth of July, I thought was really cool. If you saw the fireworks, man, that was a lot better than previous years. I think we still have quite a lot of work to do there. We can really dial up our game. I'd love to see us be known throughout Northern Illinois of, as the place to come to see the fireworks. But it was a great display that everyone did. This last weekend, I golfed with the DeKalb Police Department. It was part of their Benevolent Association. It's a fundraiser for all the philanthropic efforts that they do. And they raised quite a bit of money for, I think it was three targeted charities that they were going after. And it's just a way that they continue to give to the community, which is awesome. Also with Bill, we were part of DCDC's interview team for the new executive director. We interviewed three or four candidates, whole round of stuff going on there. A lot of qualified people that'll step into the role to fill after Paul Borak retires. So really excited to see some fresh blood in that role because we worked together with the DCDC on a lot of the economic development that's happening throughout the area. Also met with Congresswoman Underwood. Had a great candid conversation with her. I love her. It's just, it's nice and refreshing to talk to a politician that just gives it right to you. So I always enjoy my time and meetings with her. And it's always advocating for the city of DeKalb, including I met with Senator Durbin's office. And had, Bill and I both met with Senator Durbin's office and had a long conversation about rail, from a federal funding perspective, state funding, and got a little more guidance there, which was great. So we continue to do that. But overall, it was a great couple of weeks, a busy couple of weeks. But that's all I have. How about you, city manager?
No report.
All right, that was easy. Moving on to Agenda Item N, Executive Session, we have none, which means Agenda Item O, Adjournment. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeek, seconded by Alderman Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.